Good evening, I'd like to call the board meeting for July 17th, 2013 to order. Can I have a roll call please? Mrs. Schleeter.
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
I am here. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
And Mrs. Larson's excused.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes.
Thank you. You'll notice if you have a printed agenda, it says June 26th is actually July 17th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we represent and to the Constitution under God, made in this little with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is community comment. Would anyone like to make a community comment? Mrs. Han? If you can come forward to the microphones, we appreciate it, and state your name and address, please.
Kathy Han. I live at 8026 West Forest Hill Avenue, and I am a nurse at the City of Franklin Health Department. And today I would like to share with you the students who have won the art billboard contest with a tobacco-free message, and if that's our -- Dr. Pats, would you help me? Thank you.
This is the 19th year that we had a billboard contest in Franklin for the students in seventh grade, and these are representative messages to the students that works at using the best practices that we know of to convince children to start to use tobacco, and it fits in with the seventh grade curriculum. In response to the presentation, students create an artwork. This year there were 250 entries in that contest. The theme this year was "Truth About Tobacco," so it covered a variety of thoughts and the articles you're going to see some of those. The judges have their time deciding. Dr. Pats was one of our judges. Mayor Tom Taylor, Martin Burden, who's our city administrator, Alderman Steve Taylor, police chief, fire chief, board health chairman, Terry West, who is the principal at the middle school, and Chris Reeder, the assistant principal. I even had people from Madison who are in the tobacco program, prevention program with the Department of Health, through some of the judging too, as well as members of the Franklin students fighting tobacco. So, the winners of this contest will have their artwork up for one month. It will happen sometime between this coming November and next March, so we're all the way into 2014. So, we have four of the five winners that are here today, wanted to show you their artwork. The first winner is Cindy Carlton. All right. Great, thank you. She is the only picture for her team that's moving on to the finals, so she is unable to be here, but her message is to tobacco companies, they target teens, and that's one of the strong messages there. And she's going to receive a $50 gift card. The money for this program comes from the licenses that tobacco vendors pay to the city. So, we would have fewer licenses, so working with a little bit less money would be a good incentive to get some licenses. Our fourth place winner is Morgan Edwards. This is her artwork, and it says, "This billboard and tobacco wrappers both attract teens," because that's what tobacco companies are now using. And she's going to get this. And Morgan is getting a $75 gift card.
Right.
Why don't you stay up here? I want to enjoy something. Anna?
Yes, sir.
That's what it is. Anna? They look up to you and put the no smoking sign, which is exactly true. Role modeling is such an influence. I touched my heart when I saw that artwork. I'm so glad to see that. And there it is. And Anna is getting $100. So, second place winner. And it pictures different kinds of tobacco, and it's all the same in heels. So, tobacco companies are trying to attract kids with other products than cigarettes, and you're getting $125. Place winner is Alexis. And her's just saving a life. And I have to admit, I think all the judges are very nice. You did a great job. And you have $150. Their messages are great, and you know, I have to thank the school district for allowing me to go into the classrooms and share these messages, and the teachers that have done just awesome and will encourage us so that we can collect that artwork and see if it's artwork up as billboards. It's just been awesome. For 19 years, even though the state has passed that smoke-free law, we think, "Well, that problem's solved." You know, we know that it's really not. The tobacco companies are still targeting our kids and trying to get them to start with new tobacco products. We're going to fight them because we've got smart kids here.
Is there any other community comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Schleeter, second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor of -- oh, is there any discussion?
I have an item. Didn't we have a request from a board member to table the closed session until a later time?
Okay. A board member must be present to request an item be removed from the agenda.
Okay.
Would you like to remove an item from the agenda?
Sure. I'd like to request that the closed session item listed under item number 11 be removed from the agenda until our next meeting when we're all together.
In order for that to happen, we'd have to have consensus from the board. Is the board in favor of removing that item from the agenda? Mrs. Witkowski?
I would not be in favor of removing it.
Well, it's just a motion. Would we need a second? Or not? I'm in favor of leaving the agenda the way it is.
I'm also in favor of leaving the agenda the way it is. Is there a --
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda, and we have -- that was by Mrs. Schleeter, second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor of approval, the way the agenda is, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Extension, motion passes. Five to one. I mean, I'm sorry, six to -- five to one. That is correct. Thank you. Next, item five is consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve consent agenda items A through C?
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry, I have A through B.
Oh, is there a C?
A through B. Is there a C?
Yes, we have approval of minutes from May 22nd, approval -- and I'm looking at the hard copy. Approval of --
You must have an old one.
Is that what I'm looking at? I picked it up off the table, Megan. I will look at my --
Yeah, I --
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A and B.
All right, all those in favor of -- okay, all those in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. School board announcements, item number six. Does anyone have a school board announcement?
Just that I sent out an email, referenced National Night Out.
Yes, you did.
And I gave, actually, I found a different picture. Reference police, community policing, and I gave it to Megan.
Do you want to take a look at it, too?
For the coloring?
It's a coloring, yeah, coloring page. Okay. And then if board members could let Mrs. Schleeter know their availability, that would be great.
Will the calendars be available at that time?
I'm sorry?
Will the calendars be available at that time?
Calendar. We just proofed them today, so they should be ready.
Any other announcements? All right, thank you. Okay, school board calendar, item seven. We have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, August 21st, here at the ECC, Education and Community Center at 5:30 PM, followed by the annual meeting of the electors at 6 o'clock PM, here at the Education and Community Center. And then on August 26th, we have the board retreat, also here at the ECC at 6 o'clock And then item eight is approval items, and we have the approval of the annual meeting of the electors' agenda. And hopefully you've all taken a look at the agenda. It's a standard, pretty standard agenda. Dr. Pats, do you agree?
It is.
Does anyone have any questions, any board members on the agenda, or any comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the annual meeting of the electors' agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Schleeter. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the annual meeting of the electors' agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions, motion carries. Next is approval of the 2013-2014 CISA contract. Dr. Pats?
This is a pretty standard approval. It allows us to solicit services from our CISA, and we bring this before the board each year for formal approval. Oftentimes, we'll come back, possibly October, when numbers could change in some of the programs, or we may have to add additional services, and so we would bring that back for additional action for this meeting. We're just asking for the approval of the CISA contract.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the 2013-2014 CISA contract?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. Is there any discussion?
Just a question on the turning points. I know you got back to me that that was for a special placement. Is that just one child already known, or is it just a slot that you --
No, it's a child that we placed there because of his specific needs.
And you had mentioned that the goal, of course, is to keep that as short as possible. So, will a year be typical, or?
I don't think there is a typical. We started in the middle of last year, and right now, our discussion is, we're hoping to transition back late fall or Christmas, maybe January. So, that's our goal, but it really depends.
But the $31,000 is for a year, or?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If, just to be clear, if we contract for this, but we're only there half a year, we only pay for half a year.
I also noticed that there's a February 1st renewal date in the contract. Is that when we need to notify? Maybe that's a question for you, Jim.
That's a general date that CISA uses. They would like districts to at least say whether they're going to continue services or continue most services, because that's the point where they're planning their budget. So, they want to have some idea if a district says, "No, I was using a lot of services, and I'm pulling out completely," it affects what they're doing. So, at that point, we let them know generally if we're continuing or not, but it isn't a binding kind of a thing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Nielsen, and a second by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor of approving the 2014 CISA contract, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Item C, approval of the 2013-2014 SWSA contract. Dr. Pats?
This is for the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance. It's a -- it works primarily with a lobbying group and keeps track of what's going on in government and so on. Last year, it did not really meet our needs, but there's been a change in the way they do things, and some different people in different positions. So, we are recommending for approval, but only for the $3,000 for the district obligation. We are not going to be part or taking part in the handover research projects. We do a lot of our own research, and we have the availability to get out in other areas if we need to. So, that's an item that -- and many of the districts don't belong to that particular part, but it is something that some districts utilize. However, we don't want to do that. So, it would just be for the $3,000 for the annual membership for SWSA.
Just so the research, is that known projects that they're working on, or is it just whatever group might come up that might --
Generally, it's a small group that might join together to solicit research on a specific issue. That might be involved in those four or five districts, or three or four. The districts could go independently and look for research on different things, but we didn't see the value in it at all, because we have the ability to do most of that on our own.
Have we ever used them for research?
Last year was the first year that that started.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have -- do we have a motion to approve the 2013-2014 SWSA contract?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Schleeter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Schleeter, second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor of approving the 2013-14 SWSA contract, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Item nine, we have nine A, clerk's report, annual meeting notice. Mrs. Schleeter.
Notice is hereby given to the qualified electors of the Franklin Public School District, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, that the annual meeting of said district will be held at the Education and Community Center, 8255 West Forest Hill Avenue, on Wednesday, August 21st, 2013, at 6 PM, for the purposes of conducting hearings on the annual school district budget and the recreation budget, levying a tax for school district and recreation purposes, levying a tax for debt services purposes, and transacting such other business as may legally come before the annual meeting.
Thank you. Nine B, instructional services report, music curriculum review executive summary. Dr. DeZuric?
Thank you. Jim's -- we're going to be projecting, so we might want to part the Cs a little Well, it's my honor to bring this review before you tonight. This portion of the presentation, the purpose of it, is to just highlight some of the nuances in the review that we feel are unique coming out of the music summary. So, you did receive the executive summary, and I'm not going to go over all of that, but I am going to share a few important details with you. And actually, I'm not going to share by myself. Lindy Reinders is here with me.
And I'll trot up there, because if I'm telling you who people are, and I don't have a little laser pointer, you'll wonder. So, I'm Lindy Reinders. I teach at Robinwood Elementary School, and I've been in the district -- this will be my 22nd year teaching. And this is our music department, and let me just introduce who most of these people are right here. This is Jamie Schleck, choir at the middle and high school. Rich Tobias, Pleasant View General Music. Cheryl Miracle, band at the middle school, and sometimes the elementary. She's at Ben Franklin right now. TJ Hall, and he was here, he's here with us tonight, and he played for us earlier. Thank you, TJ, by the way, for providing that for us. He is orchestra at a couple of different elementary schools, and at the high school. Ron Booth, way in the back, middle school band and elementary school band. Ally Umhefer, high school band. This is myself. Heather Tate, Ben Franklin General Music. Tom Mattson, band at two of our elementaries. Liesl Ellenwood and Sana Russell are leaving us this year. They had job transfers in their families, so they'll be leaving us. Liesl Todd Orchestra and Sana Todd General Music. Nani Bulak, who's also here, and she teaches at South of Ben General Music, and Carl Aganen Band at some of our elementaries. So, you have kind of a better idea if you see faces around that know they're part of our music department.
And they're smiling because they just finished this extensive slide. That was our celebration day. So, I want to thank TJ again. We asked the music department, we felt it was appropriate for you to enter to a musical, some type of music tonight, because this was a music review. So, TJ's a very talented guy, and was willing to join us to do that this evening. I won't go through the four phases, but I do always like to remind the school board and members of the audience that this is a very extensive process. None of it is done without much thought and consideration, and when the department is small, like music, every member participates. So, everybody has a voice in the work, which is very important to us in Franklin. This process took 13 months to do the work, and we met on all release days in the summer, and sometimes evenings to accomplish the work. And then all of their PLC time during the school year, the time when they get together to collaborate, was designated to this, too. So, several, several hours were put into the process.
As we were beginning our review, and we did research in best practices and studies and surveys, we also discovered that the U.S. Department of Education also does a study on all of their areas, and music was one of them, and these are some of the benefits they found in music education. Some of the things to highlight that weren't on here but was part of their study was that, and I'm going to read it so I get it exactly right. Data showed that students involved in band or orchestra during their middle and high school years demonstrated significantly higher levels of math proficiency by the grade 12, and the results were even more pronounced in low-income students. So, that just goes to show, and I know this is a lot of what you've heard in the past, but knowing that the U.S. Department also does, Education Department does those studies, and they're finding the same kind of results that we are, is pretty promising for music. This is our music mission statement, and at the bottom, you can see our Music Matters slogan. This is done in phase one. So, right after we're finished with our research and studies of best practices, and some of the surveys that we took from within Franklin here, we put this together, and this is really what guides us through the whole review process. And I said, I think some things that changed in our mission statement, or things that we really wanted to make sure that we got across, was that we establish a lifelong appreciation of music for all the students. So, not just a knowledge of how to play the instrument, but how do they appreciate that music, and how it's made, and how they can make connections as an adult in music, consuming or performing themselves.
And as with all of our content areas, standards drive the work that we do. So, music has five, they appear to be simple standards, but you will learn very shortly, they're very complex standards when it comes to delivery of them. And we want people in the community of Franklin to see our music people as music educators and not just conductors of performances, because the conducting of performances comes after the education and of the learning that goes into the pieces that you see. So, what we're going to do in the next few minutes of this presentation is highlight what does curriculum look like in music, because it is a bit different than the other content areas, but it is nonetheless rigorous than any other content area. So, in a few minutes, we will get into making the standards come to life and explaining what we do with those. But before we do that, you did see the data, the data that we reviewed as a K-12 music department, and I just want to highlight a few of the areas. We always survey all of the stakeholders when we do our reviews, so that they have a voice in the review, and that's parents, community, and then certain students. We select certain grade levels, and we also survey the teachers that don't teach music, and we look at that and figure out what it means to us. And there were a few things that jumped out at us, and it was that some of the very -- you notice at elementary, kids are all interested in music, except 10% of them. And by the time you get to middle school, about 54% of them aren't interested in music. And then at high school, Mike Katie always used to use the saying, "The feet doesn't do the walking or the voting." And when it comes to high school, only 18% of our students are enrolling in music courses. And we feel, because of the benefits we listed for you earlier and what we learned in the review, we'd like to see that number higher. And in the surveys, the parents said over and over, "We need a performing arts center." Well, we have a performing arts center, so we feel we need to ensure we have a music program now that keeps the right amount of music students in that area. And what is the right amount? We're not sure. There's schools that have upwards of 35% of their kids performing at the, or participating in music at the high school level. So, based on that, when we looked at the data in the district, there was no direct correlation to music. I mean, there's the big national studies that talk about improvements in math, and we know that, and we honor that. But for us in Franklin, when we looked at the data that Mike Zellmer brings before all of you, and we reviewed it, we weren't able to make any really good correlation. So, it was TJ that said, you know, "We should design our own study, and we should follow some data and see what's happening. Figure out where the students are going, how they're, why they're going, how are they performing in their other classes." So, we, in very much detail, went over those three studies in the executive summary. And this school year, after we get underway with the revised music program, we're going to select the study we feel will best help us increase our participation in music, and then determine how long the study needs to run, and then run the study and work on the results. So, we will definitely share those with you when we get some results. So, this is something unique we found in this review, that we had to design some studies to get some data that would help the music people do their work.
I can't see the last one. What do you see?
It's tracking instrument choices over time. And like I said, they're all --
Do you understand what that means?
Well, is that a question, or what's the study is just to find out how they change, or it's something?
Well, what are they taking, and why, and where do they quit, and how did they --
Or do they change? You know, once in a while, a student will start on clarinet, and you know, halfway decide, you know, "I really want to play violin." And so, why did they do that? Why didn't they start on violin?
Okay. And does that impact them leaving band or, you know, orchestra? So, we look at that.
And the goal is to do all studies?
No, we're going to choose one. They're pretty ambitious studies. The group was very ambitious when they designed them. So, we start out with one, and then determine if we need further studies, because we do have to figure out that 18%, and the only way we're going to do it is by analyzing what Okay, we're going to move into the portion of this presentation that shares with you how we're designing music curriculum in Franklin. And Lindy was remiss, because Ally Waya, Ally Umhefer is here. She's in this little box. She's, she was not able to join us this evening, because as, it's very difficult to work with music people, because they're constantly working with kids outside the school day. So, Ally is up at the high school working. She assured me it was inside this evening, but she is working with students. So, she is going to do some explaining via this presentation. The first part is, I want to prepare you for what you're going to hear. The first part, she will refer to this document, so if you just hang on to it, she'll refer to it shortly. But in this presentation, the first few minutes, she explains what CMP is, and then she talks about how she brings it into her curriculum. And this is actually a lesson from a unit that she designed for CMP. So, we wanted to have you understand the rigor in the music curriculum, and how a music educator designs lessons, because it does look different than a core area. So, let me get Ally up. She chose not to put her head on here anywhere, so. She chose not to put her head on here anywhere, so.
Franklin Public Schools K-12 Music Department has been reviewing and revising the curriculum for the past year. At this point, we are in the design and implementation stage. And after a great deal of research of best practices, we as a department have decided to embrace the comprehensive musicianship through performance, or CMP, approach for unit development. The CMP project was initiated in 1977 when educational research had demonstrated that students involved in a music performance group were often merely learning to perform pieces for a concert. Even a few years of participation, students could not demonstrate real understanding of how music worked, where it fit historically or culturally, or how to offer critical or interpretive insight. Rather than functioning like independent, comprehensive musicians, they could only reproduce what they had been taught to play or sing for a concert. A small group of concerned Wisconsin music teachers developed a CMP model by examining the best practices of ensemble directors whose rehearsals were informed by comprehensive musical learning and whose students were not only able to perform well, but to write, speak, and think about music in meaningful ways. CMP has given music teachers a model for instruction that goes deeper, interfaces with the broader school curriculum, and can be meaningfully assessed. On May 31st and June 3rd of this past school year, Chris Gleason, a Sunbury Middle School Band Director and CMP Committee Member, visited the Franklin music teachers to provide a two-day in-service about the program. During this time, we learned about the components of the model in depth and also had the opportunity to start designing our units in this comprehensive way. The CMP model was developed through a careful examination of the teaching and learning process in music in which the learner and the music are the central focus. The selection point of the model helps teachers evaluate and choose high-quality music that is rich in concepts for teaching and is appropriate to their students' skill and ability levels. Analysis sheds light on those varied elements of the music that we want our students to learn and understand toward their development of true comprehensive musicianship. Outcomes, or learning targets, establish clear goals for learning in the areas of skill, knowledge, and perhaps most significantly, affective and aesthetic value of the music. Strategies are the myriad creative ways to teach toward these outcomes, varying the approach for visual, oral, and kinesthetic learning styles and actively involving students in the learning process. Assessment allows teachers to develop meaningful criteria for feedback and evaluation and helps students become aware of their growth and development as musicians. Because the five components of the model are equally important and are inextricably connected, planning can begin at any of the points and can be cross-referenced throughout the process. CMP's student-centered approach encourages students to be more actively involved in the learning process. Critical thinking is encouraged with their participation in musical interpretation, problem-solving, and assessment. The introduction of high-level musical skills such as analysis, composition, and improvisation takes students beyond rudimentary skill development to a broader musical experience. The natural outcome of increased musical understanding is quality performances. Concerts will take on more depth of meaning for both students and audience members as parts of performances will include insights into the learning process and demonstration of interdisciplinary connections that have been made in the classroom. School board members should have a copy of a sample CMP plan, which was designed for the Franklin High School Jazz Ensemble. Please feel free to look over the components of the plan as you listen to the Jazz Ensemble perform "When the Saints Go Marching In" from their April 2013 performance tour of New Orleans.
Well, I'd like you to hear it all. I know you have a video channel, so I'm going to move it forward a little bit.
...of New Orleans jazz, Justin Weiss, a member of the class of 2013, transcribed and arranged his own version of the Dirty Dozen Brass Band's song, "Voodoo." This project required knowledge of composition and arranging techniques as well as a firm understanding of the way in which jazz has evolved from its early Dixieland days to present-day brass bands. This arrangement could be presented at a concert in conjunction with performance of "When the Saints Go Marching In" as a way to share with the audience the student projects that supplemented and enhanced our study of the piece. In summary, the comprehensive musicianship through performance process will help Franklin educators explore the elements of meaningful music performance skills, knowledge, and affect, and integrate those elements into student-centered teaching plans. Students will become more actively involved in the learning process and will achieve a much deeper understanding of the music they study and its connections to other disciplines, cultures, and history.
So you did get a little view of Ally. She was in there. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Lindy and she is going to talk a little bit about what that looks like at the elementary level because rigor is relative depending upon the level.
Right. And before I get to, something that Ally referred to, but she didn't spell it out in her presentation, was the word informants. She talked about having a more informed performance where you have, the audience has more of an insight of what goes on during the learning process of learning a piece, but she never used the word informants. So it is a word that we use in music education where we take more information and we share that with the audience as we're performing so that the audience understands a little bit more about what happened in the classroom to make the performance happen. And we, a lot of times you'll see this at the elementary level, maybe a little more, but I think through the CMP process, you'll see that, you'll see that in the high school and the middle school as well, in the performing groups. So what I handed out to you before from Ally is the detailed analysis that the teachers put together if they use the CMP process in their lesson planning. And what I did, I did the exact same kind of process, but I did it in a little quicker version and I put it up on some slideshow presentation because I knew I was going to be here. So I selected a piece for my elementary school students. And when I did that, I found out that the piece was in minor, it's a piano piece, you know, it was written by Chopin. It was requested at his funeral. He knew he was going to die, he was ill. And so those are some of the things that I would be sharing with the kids, maybe not initially in the piece, but a little bit later in the piece as we got to know the piece better and at certain times. Go ahead and pop to the next one. So after I do some research and my analysis, I also look at the outcomes. What do I want the children to know from this piece? And there are three main areas. Skill, what kind of skill are they going to come out of your understanding? So my skill for this piece was recognizing the accompaniment versus the melody. That's pretty lofty at an elementary age, especially first and second grade, but they can do it. It's amazing what these kids can do. It's amazing. And you'll see that in some of the video clips. Knowledge, I wanted them to have a knowledge of understanding and identifying songs in minor. They might not be able to say, "Oh, that's in minor right away," but they'll understand what that sound is and how it makes them feel and that's how they'll have that knowledge. "Oh, that's in minor," or "I think that might be in minor because it makes me feel this way." And then that affect. So the affect is one of the most important parts. How does that really link to the person listening or performing that song? What message, and that's the affect that I want the kids to understand. What message do you think the song, these songs in minor or a song in minor is telling us? And those are the three focused areas that I would be working on with this piece. After the outcomes is really where the fun, this is the part that I just love, developing the strategies. And for instance, in the area of skill, the first thing I would do is have the kids listen with their ears and- And I have the kids lay down and block out. Some of them close their eyes, try to block out what's going on around them. And then I might have them listen with their ears and eyes. And this is a listening map that we use on the smartboard. Looks like the same one. Looks like the same clip. Never mind. So that might not be linked correctly. There's a listening map that they would follow on the screen that would go through, not in notation, but in pictures of part of the instrumental accompaniment, part of the melody. And then I would ask them to follow with a written instrument map so I could see that they were tracking, similar to when they're reading. And so that's that nice tracking and that mapping skill as well. Then I would have them move to each part. And you'll see the clustering here. Some are doing the accompaniment, some the melody. And I just love that because little Meredith with her little rainbow, she really had that accompaniment going, she was going. "Look, he's doing the melody." And it was just so great to see, they got it like instantly after they listened to it and saw it, they could move to that just instantly, it was fantastic. Then in another class and further on, this would be maybe a week later or further on in the quarter, I would talk about creating songs and creating accompaniment. And then they'd actually be able to create their own piece with a partner. Somebody plays the accompaniment, someone plays the melody, and here's that clip. One thing I thought that was really insightful of these kids that I didn't expect from them, they realized that the melody is that main part and should really shine. And it was funny, that little Michael's sitting there and he's playing, he didn't want to overshadow Joe. He knew Joe was playing the melody, so he's just kind of taking it easy, playing his little chords and not getting too into it. I thought that was really wonderful to see though. So another area, of course, is affect. And I just wanted to show you some of the areas here. How does the song make-
A little bit of miserable in it.
A little bit of miserable. I just love that. I had asked them, I asked the kids, you know, "How do you think this song makes, how does it make you feel?" And this was before we knew what Chopin was feeling or that it was played at his funeral. And I just love that, "There's a little bit of miserable in it." I just love that. That's the clip of the year, it's really great. And then also some other strategies, I might ask them, "What's happening in the music? What do you think the composer wants us to feel?"
I, in the beginning, it was sad and sorrow. It wasn't much emotion, but near the middle, it had a lot of emotion, but it was still sorrow. And then for the rest of the song, it was all sorrow.
A lot of sorrow. And then something that also surprised me, I was really excited about, was they connected. So early in the year, we had talked about Beethoven and studied Beethoven. We had watched an HBO movie about Beethoven and his life. And it was about, it's specially designed for elementary school kids. And one of my students made a connection between Chopin and Beethoven.
Well, I think it's like, it was Beethoven's life. Because it was like, it was mean in the middle and sad and like, it was like mean like all over the place and then it goes to sad at the end. Because it's, because that's when he dies.
And it was just so interesting because we hadn't, I mean, we hadn't talked about Beethoven since, you know, like a whole quarter, probably 10, 12 weeks. And he made that connection into Beethoven and he remembered the beginning of the show Beethoven was starting to go deaf and he was very sad. And then he got angry with all of the piece that he was deaf. And then at the end, it was sad again because he died. And people realized he was only angry because he was frustrated. And so it's interesting that he could connect Beethoven's life to Chopin's music too, which I thought was fantastic. Like I said, it's amazing what these kids can do. So after you do the strategies, of course, any area would be assessed. And we do a variety of assessments in music, not just performance-based, but also verbal and written responses. They might even just write their emotions or what they're feeling for other songs, making connections on a bubble, a variety of different kinds of assessments that we use in music.
So we hope you got a little view into a teacher's classroom because a lot goes on behind the scenes before that great performance comes before all of you or the community or families. And what we'd like to talk a little bit about now is you have to deliver that curriculum in a certain way. And after much deliberation as a group, we agreed the best term to describe music was the workshop model. And we also agreed that music has been delivering in a progressive way long before all the other content areas. So we, and I can say that because I'm not a music teacher, so I'm not bragging about So we, and I can say that because I'm not a music teacher, so I'm not bragging about that, but music has always personalized its learning, and that's what workshop model is. So when we talked to you about literacy, we talked about literacy K-8 would be delivered in a workshop model. And what that really means is you start out by setting the intention for the day with the group, and then you move into small group and individual work, and support students with their needs, and group them with peers. And then you end the day talking about the intention and where you've got, and what the plan is for the next time you're gathering. And that's exactly what music does, so workshop described it best. We also talked about, music uses all kinds of technology in their performance. You saw Ally's presentation tonight, that's very common for them to do with the students. Lindy had all those clips, because they're constantly using technology in their work. But they took it one step further with the music Google site. And this was in your exact summary, but we wanted to quickly show you what the site will look like. And I apologize, because I'm going to have to move it back and forth a little, it doesn't fit on the screen.
So we developed together as a group some of the needs we felt that were necessary either through communication with our parents, or our students, what we really needed to have our site provide for, as a communication tool and a learning tool for our students. And we just got this started, so it's still in the process. We worked a little bit on it this summer, we're planning on having most of it ready to go at the beginning of the school year. But I think it'll be a wonderful area for people to go to and use as a resource, parents, students, even ourselves as teachers.
And you will all have access, access to it as well. All right, I'm not going to spend any time on this, because we brought this to you in November, but one of the things we discovered was the deficiencies of non-performance areas, or non-traditional performance areas. So the areas in red are under construction and will be added over the next two years to the music program.
And these course offerings here are not necessarily new, but they're a refocus. We've always offered a general music at the element, at the middle school level, but we're going to revamp it, rename it, add some technology, add some diversity with world music, so you can see the red in world music, grade seven, and then digital music in grade eight. And we've always offered general music although, throughout the elementary school, and as an option in fifth and sixth grade. And we're noticing that we, and you noticed too in some of our data, that we're having a hard time retaining students in certain areas in the performing groups. So we felt at the elementary level, it's probably the best idea to blend our general music into a harmonies class, which would be vocal and instrumental things, instruments such as guitars and ukuleles, and handbells, and drumming along with the voice, to help them bridge that gap in between middle school, elementary and middle school, and make sure that the students know they have a choice to get into choir, and they've already been doing that kind of skill in elementary.
Question, are we going to reintroduce the, giving them the option of being in band and, and choir for instance, or is it still going to be, make a choice?
At the middle school?
At, no, at the elementary school, I thought that you couldn't be in both.
Right, you, you select one music in fifth and sixth grade? That's still, that area, that's a good question, Tim, that's still in review. We went back to the drawing board, and we're trying to figure that out, because it's a, it's a staffing issue, it's a time issue. So we, we are back at the drawing board, we're meeting again as a group in August to try to figure that out, because we found other districts that have higher numbers in their programs later on, the kids had more choices earlier on.
But maybe offering that hybrid course may be a way of finding some middle school, that does sound interesting.
We brought it in, and we had kids enroll, and we didn't get the numbers we were hoping for. So we tried this hybrid, and so now we're going to go back and look again at it.
And is there just one entry point in band and orchestra, you have to start in fifth grade? You can't defer that to?
No, our, our band and orchestra teachers are awesome. They will accept a student at any time, as long as the student is willing to do what they need to do to catch up eventually. So they, they've always opened their doors and brought kids in, but the parent and the student has to make a commitment to developing that skill set. So that, that's a really generous offer from the teachers, because it takes a lot of work to bring a student up, but they don't want to turn away anybody who's musical or has interest. And I just wanted to quickly point out, music, as with all areas, has to be supported and monitored once we come out of review, because you see the changes that come out of the review work. So professional development is, has occurred at the start, and we will continue to provide professional development as needed by the music department. They are all working this summer on their unit design around, using the CMP approach. And then you can see some ongoing trainings up there. And then we are sensitive to the request of the department, because sometimes they don't know what they need till they get into the throes of the, the shifted work.
And this is a wonderful quote that I just want you to read over and think about. And I think we even know that if we think about what's happening right now with the student act that's changing from no child left behind, I mean, I think that's one of the issues that they're bringing up. We want children to be inventive, resourceful, and imaginative. We don't want every child to be exactly the same, or we're going to have problems down the road when it comes to developing new businesses and expanding our communities. So I really feel that in the last year, since we've started this review process, the music department, along with Wendy's guidance, has really developed a rigorous and collaborative approach to music for kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. And I think we're going to see some real improvement in, in working together as a team, and hopefully we'll see students retaining into the music into the high school, or are going to work really hard in making sure they realize how important that is for them as, development just as a person. So, thank you.
And I want to thank Lindy, she did an extensive amount of work behind the scenes. And TJ and Nani for coming tonight, and they're representative of an outstanding department, and it was a pleasure to work with them and redesign our already great music program. So thanks to them for their work.
Thank you for your serenade before the meeting, that was very nice. Are there any other questions before we move on? Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, I believe, is Dr. Miller for the instructional, oh, I'm sorry, Human Resources Report, Teacher Compensation Model Draft, Dr. Miller.
I, I too have a brief PowerPoint presentation, so I apologize, I told you before. It's very, it's very brief. What I'd like to do this evening is, is share with you just an overview of what we've done this past year and where we're at. Jim Milzer and Wendy Zerick will assist in the presentation of the actual model. So this first slide identifies an important goal associated with teacher compensation. Teaching has a long history of being one of the most, if not the most important professions. Every school day in this country, over 52 million children are influenced by a teacher. The future of our society depends on that influence. Therefore, teaching needs to continue to be a valued and important career, and teacher compensation needs to be designed to allow an individual to, to choose teaching as a lifelong career. In developing a compensation model for teachers, we've identified that while we've been fortunate to attract and retain outstanding professionals, in order to continue to employ these outstanding professionals, it's essential that the district have in place a compensation model that embodies high expectations, coupled with a fair starting wage, a fair wage progression over time, and compensable leadership opportunities. As we work to design a compensation model that not only retains our good teachers, but provides an appropriate motivation as well, we studied the research. Some of what, that's Mike's phone. Some of what tells us, tells us is that equitable compensation does not lead to increased teacher engagement. And the most promising systems are based upon a collaborative effort that honors multiple perspectives and builds trust. The research is clear that the use of assessment of teacher performance and student outcomes is valid, reliable, and feasible, meaning there is a connection between teacher performance and student achievement. And with regard to compensation, the research indicates that financial incentives can contribute to positive changes, particularly when coupled with professional development and a supportive organizational structure. In addition to studying the research around teacher performance, assessment, and compensation, we spent some time studying motivation theory. In the book Drive by Daniel Pink, Dr. Pink identifies that in addition to compensation, it's important to provide an environment where employees have a sense of purpose, mastery, and autonomy. Along with the considerations identified in the research, other goals of the compensation model needed to be considered. These goals included designing a model that's competitive, so as to attract and retain the best employees, affordable and sustainable, a model that does not detract from motivation, is compatible with the base wage rules in the state of Wisconsin, and is logistically manageable. In addition to those goals, important factors that were considered in the, the design of the compensation model include such things as considering supply and demand, job expectations, evidence of student growth as a result of professional growth engagement, measures of student achievement and teacher performance in the classroom, and teacher's performance outside the classroom, including leadership and collaboration. In the fall of 2012, the district partnered with consultants from the, from Verisite to obtain feedback that would allow us to consider all factors and to achieve those goals. Over the course of the last school year, the consultants facilitated focus groups with over 50 teachers, all building principals, and with you, the Board of Education. This information was used to generate ideas and create a platform for the initial draft of a compensation plan. This slide represents the work in the initial timeline, which has now been modified. The single most important piece of feedback we obtained from all of the focus group feedback is that the compensation model for teachers needs to provide a roadmap for future wages. Teachers want to know that they can enter into a teaching career and be able to support their family now and into the future. Other things we learned from the feedback is that teachers want a compensation model that provokes, promotes professional learning, recognizes the work that goes above and beyond, increases opportunities for leadership, promotes collaboration, has coaching embedded, and allows for more reliable and valid supervision. And finally, more importantly, teachers expect that a compensation model be transparent and attainable. In summary, the draft model you're about to see sets wages at a level in which the teacher is able to earn a fair wage based upon annual increases. Teachers who aspire to take on more responsibility and new roles within the district are able to increase their wage earnings beyond the base wage increases. In addition, the model's designed so that in the future, the district will provide additional compensation for teachers who significantly exceed expectations for performance. So at this time, I'd like to share with you the, the draft of the framework. This is, you're very much on the front end of the work here. We have a lot more work to do. As a matter of fact, we spent a great deal of time today with our administrator team identifying what work teams will be necessary for us to fill in the blanks, if you will, or provide the detail to this plan. So I'm going to talk through the first part of it, and then Mr. Milzer is going to share some pieces, and then Dr. Dzerck will also share pieces of this model. The, the framework that we have drafted moves away from the traditional steps and lane salary schedule that we have operated in, in the past, and moves us towards a model that creates career bands for teachers. So I'd like to walk you through that, just briefly, giving you a general overview of those career bands. Starting on the left, the first career band for a teacher in this district would be the New Franklin Educator Career Band. And teachers who are new to teaching, or new to Franklin, would all be a part of this particular career band. The next career band is called the Professional Educator, and those are the teachers who have experience teaching in Franklin Public Schools. So you have to start out in the New Franklin Educator Band, and you move into the Professional Educator Band. The next career band in the model is the Professional School and Program Educator. As you can see, those are teachers with experience teaching whom assume leadership for school and/or program development. These teachers still teach in the classroom, but they may have release time to provide support and leadership at the school level. This evening, you had Ms. Lindy Reinders here, for example, who provides a great deal of leadership for the music program in this district. Her role perhaps would fall into this career band, because not only does she teach, she provides this program leadership for the district. The last career band is the Professional Systems Educator. This is a person who is not teaching in the classroom. This is a person who has experience teaching and assumes leadership and supervision of teachers for individual development and system development. As you're aware, we are moving into implementing the Educator Effectiveness Program in, in the state of Wisconsin and in our own school district. And the research is clear that we need to provide teachers more support in the classroom in terms of their practice. And a principal needs other experts to assist in terms of being present in that classroom to do those observations and to provide that feedback to teachers so that they can improve their practice. So the vision is that there will be teachers who fulfill that role. They will coach, and they will supervise. Principals evaluate their license to do that, but we need other experts to be in the classrooms observing teacher practice. So this is another career band, another place for a teacher to, to work within this district. So very briefly then, you'll see the number of days that are identified for those career bands, for that employee, in which that employee would work. Each of the bands is associated with a minimum salary. I can defer to Mr. Milzer right now to speak to that briefly.
Starting with the New Franklin Educator, you can see there's a percentage, 17% there. So with, in looking at the staff that we have now, we tried to place individuals on where they would, where they would be in this model. So 17% of our staff would be in that band right now. And the minimum salary in that area would be $44,000. I think that, we had generated that if the program had started in 13, 14. And that would be for a new teacher. If we had an experienced teacher, let's say with five to 10 years, coming from another district, they would still start in this band, but their salary would be commensurate with what they were doing and the amount of experience that they had. with what they were doing and the amount of experience that they had. And then as far as salary enhancements, there, there were none for this category. That's, that first three years that we're looking at a teacher so that we want them to be concentrating on what they're supposed to be doing and not thinking about other things. For the professional educator category, you can see that's seventy-four percent of our teachers. So that is the, the largest group. Most of them would be there. And the minimum salary there would be fifty thousand dollars.
What's the maximum salary in these?
There isn't a maximum salary in these because the amounts would go up. It would be a range that would go up year after year.
Right, but, so the minimum would go up and the maximum would then go up.
Right.
So there should be a maximum. The range is going to move.
Right, we could set a maximum based on that. Right now, all we've got listed are the minimums. So we don't have a calculated maximum in there, but we could calculate one. For the professional school program educator, the minimum was sixty thousand. And again, most people that are in this category, I think all people in this category, were making more than that now. But that's the minimum for this area. It would only be five percent of our staff. And they would have, these last two categories would have salary enhancements, and you can see them listed there. We don't have exact dollar amounts for those. That's one of the areas that we'll be working on in the coming years to design that piece of it. But in general, they would get salary enhancements for extra things like those. And then for the professional systems educator, we don't list one other than saying that the salaries commensurate with experience and market value because those positions will be very different from each other in what they're doing, their knowledge base, and what they're expected to do. And again, that's only four percent of our staff that would be in that area. And each of these areas, you would, the district would determine how many spots we have in those and what the jobs actually are. And then teachers would apply to move into those. It wouldn't be a teacher deciding that they're going to be that one and, and getting to be there.
Excuse me, Jim. In that last part, may I answer the question I'm about to ask? Are these the percentages that the district would like to see moving forward? I understand this is kind of how things are laid out now, but is this kind of where you'd like to see the?
Yeah, I think for the, for the, at least the near term, as we're looking at how things will work and what teachers will do, we would see, starting out with this, and, and I would see it continuing for a while until we had other needs, and you might tweak this a little bit, but I wouldn't see it being radically different.
And in the third column, where, where most of the employees are in excess of the minimum, how about the first two columns? Where, do we have people that are making less than what the minimums are now?
No, we're right at about that for our minimum now. And then for the professional educator, I think we may have a few, maybe five, something like that, that would be below that and would be moved up just a little bit.
And that's, Chris, what I was getting to, if, if this were to go into effect, you know, for the thirteen fourteen, are we looking at significant raises to make this model work? Or are we close to that already, or?
Yeah, I think we're pretty close overall on there. You know, there would be some things that would have to be done for moving people around and some of these enhancements, as well as some, some of the increases, we look at extra days here and so forth, but not huge.
One of the things I'd mentioned is the timeline was originally proposed that we would begin this in fall of fourteen, um, excuse me, thirteen. The plan now is to begin this in the fall of fourteen. So we'd like to take a whole year to work through a number of these issues and define quite a bit in this, in this model. Yeah, that needs to be defined in terms of the criteria. So there can be some planning for what those costs would be, and that would be incorporated in the budget before this would move forward, if there were indeed costs.
Would we also be able to get some kind of a graph or chart of, you know, where everybody is based on these four different rankings? I mean, I, we don't, I don't have to see names or anything, just if we have forty people, and if we graphed it as to where are they on their salaries, what would that look like?
I think so, if I understand specifically what you're asking for. I'm sure there's some way that we could put that together. We have these percentages here, which would identify the, generally the number of people that would be in each of the bands, but to put that in some sort of graph, I think we could do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm interested in is, let's take the professional educator, where seventy-four percent of our staff is, and we have a minimum there of fifty thousand dollars. If we charted that and we had fifty thousand here, and I don't know what the outside top end would be, that's kind of what I was looking for. Let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars. Where is everybody? Are they all skewed over here? Are they all skewed towards the beginning? You know, what, where are they? Is it, is there a nice, what do they call that graph?
Bell curve.
Yeah, bell curve?
Right, right. Okay, I understand what you're asking for. Yeah, definitely had that information. You'd like that.
I just have a quick question too.
Please.
Can you just give me an example of a professional systems educator?
For example, we have Amy Cowell, who works in our math department, who does not teach, and she does quite a bit of leadership in, in the area of mathematics district-wide.
Chad Kafka.
Possibly. Chad Kafka would fall into that category. So that still has to be defined, and we're going to be very, very careful about that. We, we view that as a very important position in the district, and there'll be a lot of criteria around what's required.
Okay.
It's the specialist positions.
So, so they're currently not teaching also? You wouldn't create more non-teaching teachers, I guess, is my question?
Not initially, no. We wouldn't do that initially.
And I think Judy, they might be teaching a percentage. They just wouldn't have a full-time teaching contract. You know, it'd be some type of, depending upon the situation, they're all very individual.
They may still be working with students. They might not have a classroom.
Right.
For example, a reading specialist, for example, may still be working with students, but doesn't have a classroom. So those are details that, again, would take a whole year to kind of sort that out. But we wanted to create a career band for teachers who want to be leaders, but they don't want to be principals. And we need them, frankly, to coach other teachers in their practice.
But they still have the same licensing and others?
They still have the same licensing to, to work with students and teachers. You'll see a little bit more about that. I'll move forward with this then. With regard to the minimum requirements, if you start again on the left and move to the right in order to be a new Franklin educator, you simply have to meet our hiring criteria. And I say simply, that's not very easy. After you've been a new Franklin educator, after you've received the recommendation of an administrator or administrative team, I should say, you would then be allowed to become a professional educator. If you do not get that endorsement, you won't continue to work in Franklin. So you have to be recommended to be a professional educator in the district. The idea is that you'd have three-plus years' experience and that you would have accumulated forty-five hours of professional development. And you'll hear more about the PD in the next section. Dr. Deser is going to explain that component of the model.
Can I, just real quick? So if I heard that right, then they're here for three years. They have to get a recommendation, forty-five hours of professional development. And then we want them to move to the professional educator column, if you will, the level. And if they don't, then, because you said then they won't be here.
Correct.
So that's the program to move them from the, okay.
And it's possible they wouldn't be here after the first year or two.
Well, right. So that's almost like the first column is the probationary period, if you will, but it's a three-year probationary period, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
The professional school and program educator, again, you have to successfully interview for that position. If you think of it as a position, you have to interview for that, and you have to be recommended. The idea was that you'd have seven-plus years. Please take note of the, any minimum requirements can be waived. If we have a particularly talented person who hasn't quite been here seven years, we may want them in this role. So we may waive that seven-year, but it's just a general guideline, if you will. This person would have accumulated a hundred, a hundred and five hours of PD. They would have a master's degree certification or national board certification. So it's an and/or situation, but they would have a higher level of education that would be required to assume this position or be in this career band. And then finally, the professional systems educator, again, you'll see very similar requirements, maybe more years, more hours of PD. And then here's where you'll see something about the potential of having a fifty-one principals license because in that supervision of other teachers, that would actually allow that person to write the evaluation that would go in the personnel file. You have to have that license to do that. So it is something that we've talked about. It's something that some teachers may want to attain, obtain, and, but if not that, minimally, they would be trained in the TeachScape proficiency model that's used by the state to provide teachers feedback, so that feedback's consistent. It's the same feedback language that's being used by the building principal. I'll turn it over to Dr. Deser right now to speak about the performance expectations.
And I think, just a reminder, I brought these, they're very large, so I won't lay them on the table. But obviously, as a district, we have to continuously improve. So this is the framework that we use. And I know you've seen it many times before, but we refer to it in this part. So I just wanted to remind you that, that that is what the continuous improvement framework looks like. So if you start on the left again with the initial educator, the performance expectations, that fifteen hours of professional development that Judy mentioned is fifteen hours that's designed to improve the area they're delivering. So music, for an example, would have gone through the CMP process, and that would be endorsed professional development. So there, there will be a system put in place, and the work has to be done to figure all this out. But it will be professional development that will move us forward around those eight performance indicators. So it's not any professional development or anything you choose. It's targeted professional development to meet our growth expectations in the district. And then that will be monitored and kept historically because this, this model requires historical documentation of that. And again, this is being designed, so I can't give you all the details, but we do know it will be targeted. And then meets the expectations of the educator effectiveness. Judy mentioned TeachScape. That definitely defines through the Charlotte, Charlotte Danielson model what you need to do to be a proficient educator. It's very rigorous. You have to be able to demonstrate, model it, show artifacts. So we will use the state model in our process. We won't design something else because it's a quality model and it's very comprehensive. And then successfully implements a curriculum. Every time we bring a group of teachers before you with an executive summary, we define what it means to deliver curriculum in each of the content areas. So the agreement is you will deliver curriculum in the way the review defined that delivery. So you have to do workshop if you're delivering literacy K through A would be an example of that. And then satisfactory, satisfactorily completes the mentor experience. We are required, and it is best practice to bring in new educators to the district and provide a mentoring experience for them. So we have an outline mentoring program that we're going to review and make sure it still meets our needs. And then the teachers in this area would be expected to participate and complete it satisfactorily. And then attains classroom professional status by year four, and that was to Tim's point. Anybody coming into the district starts here. A brand-new educator would be in this column for three years. An experienced educator might be able to move out after one year in this area. But the idea is you need to complete your work in this area, and you're expected to move to the next level. We don't expect to retain people in that first column. We want them to move on. It's probationary, as you described it. It's very easy for me to talk about the next ones because I define most everything. If you look in the second column, the only difference you see is the bottom line, and it says achieves CIF, and that's the, this continuous improvement framework. We call it CIF for short, or the committee work outcome. So by the time you've been in the district and you moved out of that first band, we expect you to now start helping improve building or school or district performance. So get involved in the committees, help decide what our goals are, where we need to improve, attend data retreats. So you, you've mastered your classroom pretty much, and you're able to move on to that bigger area. And then if you move on to the next one, to the performance indicators, if you look at the very last two bullets, those are different. So if you are the professional or program educator in the district, you are going to, we're going to design a coaching framework, and you are going to be expected to understand, be trained in that framework, and provide coaching to whoever it's appropriate. So if it were Lindy, she might go out and coach Nani, who is a general music teacher. So an example of that. And then the bottom one says successfully leads curriculum or committee work to intended outcomes. So in the year of a review, in Lindy's case, it would be the expectation she would work with me to follow the review process, all the steps in a review process, and bring that to you. In future years, it's monitoring what we agreed on upon in an implementation and supporting the teachers. And then if you go to the very last column where your, the professional systems educator, the last four bullets are different. Actually, that's not true. Coaching is the same, so it's the last three bullets. So they are going to successfully lead curriculum work and committee work with intended outcomes. But at this point, because of their position, I would be less involved. I would be the guide on the side, and they would be facilitating without me. Because as you know, there's thirteen areas that we're working on that are constantly in review. So if I have people that have the skill to lead those, I can support the implementation work because that needs to be supported. And then accurately supervises staff. Judy addressed that a little bit earlier. And then successfully leads curriculum reviews and anything involving implementation. So they're leading any major work in the area that they're assigned to.
Thank you. So with regard to wage increases, I want to take this.
You can see across really all of the columns, it says wage increases, and the first one is that the general increase is, is provided for meeting performance expectations. So if a teacher has met performance expectations based on these things above, they would get the general increase, which would be the negotiated increase is what we're thinking right now across the board. And then below that, we have future supplemental pay for exceptional performance. Again, an area that has to be defined. And we're not looking at coming out of, using this coming out of the gate. That's why we're putting future on it. But supplemental increases for exceptional performance on the continuous improvement framework or for the performance measures on teacher practice. So looking at those two areas and saying, if someone is doing fabulously in those areas, would they get another little bump based on that? And then how would that work? That all has to be worked out, but that's kind of how it would look or how it's envisioned. And again, that, that second piece wouldn't begin immediately.
So the general increase can be less than the negotiated amount? If they haven't, you know, they're in their first year, and, and they haven't completely met the performance expectations?
Right. If they haven't met performance expectations, it could be less than that or it could be zero.
Right now, we have growth plans in place where if that's the case, they hit zero.
And, but because we're tied into the union and it's negotiated, are we able to do that?
We negotiated, but the distribution is one of the things that we have to negotiate. But we've, we've had this for two years now. It's been, it's been an issue on negotiations, and it's involved one per, two people one year, one person last year, and it'll be involved one person going forward. And basically, what we're saying, it's like anything. If you come to work and you're not meeting expectations, you shouldn't get a raise. Simple as that.
But I agree, I just didn't think the union allowed it. But so it's good to hear that they are.
We implemented that two years ago, and it's, I think it's worked. But at the same time, it has not been even close to an issue for our district, I would say.
The general idea with these pay enhancers to be in the form of like bonuses? Or salary enhancers? Or has that never really?
We haven't worked that out yet. What I'd like to do is share with you, you know, what we plan to work on this year in terms of work teams. We plan to have an implementation work team, one that would address how are we going to implement this? How are we going to communicate it? And within there, there's pieces about how do you transition from one place to another? What happens if you want to go from being a professional school program educator back to being a professional educator? What happens with your wage? So all of that would be part of what would be decided, or excuse me, planned for by this implementation work team. We would have a professional development and work team that would help define that fifteen hours. What does that look like? What do I have to take? What if I fall? What if I fall behind? All of that needs to be defined. We need a work team around these salary enhancements. What are the job descriptions associated with each of those jobs? What is the amount that's provided? The salary enhancements don't go on the base wage. They don't go on the wage. They're enhancements. They're similar to a bonus. If you do the work, you get the money. If you stop doing that work, you don't get the money. So it's not something that builds on in terms of the teacher's salary. But there'd be a work team to work on the guidelines for that. And then finally, there'll be a work team around something called a leadership institute, which is going to help create that coaching framework that we're going to really need to have these professionals know and utilize as they work with others, among other things. So those are the, those are the, excuse me, the work teams that we came up with at this point. We're still going to think those through this summer, and then we're going to start that work this fall. Ms. Klein and Mr. Nielsen had been involved in this process to this point. I would invite you to continue with your involvement and perhaps join one of the work teams to have some board members as a part of that as well. So I really wanted to just share with you the overview of how we're moving from, you know, the steps and lanes to a career band model for the teachers in this district.
Judy, the 15 hours a year of professional development, is that provided by the Franklin School System? Or is that something that they go outside and travel and take seminars or combination?
It'd probably be a combination, but quite a bit, I believe, will be internal because we really want it to meet our needs in this district.
And I think defining professional development, we define it as job embedded practice. So oftentimes, professional development is designing the units that they have to teach. It's reflecting on data that they gathered to shift instruction. So when you think of professional development, it's not always a conference or a seminar. It's directly related to the work that has to be accomplished.
I filled in for Mr. Nielsen at the second one of these meetings when this was presented. And I think Mrs. Klein would probably agree, this really went over well. It was well received. And some of the concerns that at my table were the 15 hours, you know, how they would achieve that and when. And then for the performance expectations in the green, the last column, that they would lose teachers to that. You know, they want to keep the teachers as teachers, but it's such a small percentage that I don't think they have to worry about that. And then the $44,000, was it a really good entry-level minimum salary? And they agreed with that, that we would attract teachers that way.
Thank you.
One of the areas that we have to do, we feel we have to do some substantial work, and it's just the mindset that goes into the acceptance of this by staff. They're coming off of a union perception with contracts and everything like that. And we had a couple of examples today that we brought up, what teachers had said. And some of them would say, well, that's where I'm going. Well, you don't get to pick where you go. You have to earn the right to go there. And so, and I think our staff will be fine with that. But I think the one thing that I think was a consensus of today was this gives teachers an opportunity for some light at the end of the tunnel when they're looking at, can I get anywhere if I remain in the teaching profession? I think it does.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, this question, sorry. And you may not have figured this out yet, but would your vision be when you talk about some of the criteria being transparent and some ideas where they would kind of know after a certain amount of time, or if they do certain things, they would get X? Was that kind of how you would tie in a board certification or some of these things in the salary enhancements to if they, if these are achieved, that would maybe be tied to a dollar figure or something? Or like?
The salary enhancements will have a dollar figure. For example, mentoring currently, it's a $400 stipend. So if you do it, you get the $400. If you don't, you don't get it. So salary enhancements are just that. They're enhancements. They go away if you don't do the work. So I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, that's more cut and dry than someone who would go out and get their masters. But then, as kind of in the limbo with the step and lane, as we had talked about, they go out and get the higher education, but then there really isn't a place for them for, on the compensation side. So is that where these would tie into that? If they go out and get that?
Well, if they obtain their masters, they may be eligible to be in the last two career bands. If they don't obtain their masters, they're not eligible to be in those career bands.
So it's not so much in them getting the masters that's tied into a dollar figure. It's, that's the minimum requirement to get you into the next band.
Right.
And just to be clear, the bottom is the salary enhancements you're talking about, right? They're non-base building, is that correct? It's under wage increases?
That says future supplemental pay for exceptional.
That's different than salary enhancements?
Yes, it is different.
It is. That's more for quality.
Correct. Correct.
Did you, okay. Have we talked about those or?
Yes, that has to be defined, and it's definitely in the future. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 9D is the treasures report, Mrs. Wackowski.
As of July 2013, we have cash balances in the general fund of $22,768,870. And in the debt service fund, we have $2,577,743. And prior to August 21st, we anticipate cash requirements in the amount of $4 million for the July 31st and August 15th payrolls and accounts payables.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes. This one probably goes to Jim. But when I look back at the auditor's report of last year, our cash balance was $21,638,000 or something like that. And now we're at $22,768. And last meeting, there was, you made a comment that the wages that are going to be paid through August are considered in the past budget.
Right.
How is that going to reflect on the auditor's report? Are they going to reflect that as this prior year that we were in? Or are they going to reflect it as of June 30th?
They'll reflect it as of June 30, but they'll take that into account. That's a yearly thing that happens. Teachers are paid all the way through August, and that's counted against the money that we have from that year.
And this is July 2013, but is it the 1st of July? So, because it can't be the 31st.
No, it would have been as of the time of the report, so last week.
Oh, okay. So it's, it's not beginning or end of the month necessarily?
No. Try and take it as close to when you get the information as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Item 10A, the 2013-14 budget draft discussion, and this is also an action item. Mr. Billzer.
Well, we presented the budget. We've had a lot of questions. We sent out the answers for those. And tonight, we're looking for approval of the 13-14 budget draft, again, to get us started for the year. In October, we'll have a new budget based on the actual number of students, the actual amount of aid. We won't have any estimates left in the budget. That'll be our real budget for the year, if you will. But this is the budget that we make our best estimates on, and it starts us off for the beginning of the year.
And did we have follow-up questions? Would this be the time?
Sure.
I understand on page 12, the document is essentially the balances that we have or the budget. And under budget 2012-13, you're showing an assigned fund balance of $1,150,000. And I know you had indicated that was somehow associated with the concession project. However, that is the 2012-13 budget. So I guess, how are you assigning that fund balance without board action to assign?
On the policy, it says that the business manager can assign those funds, so I'm assigning it there. Now, you still have the last say. You still have the vote on it as to whether that's what you want to do or not. But I'm showing that coming out of the 12-13 year, that we'll take some of the additional extra funds that we have from that year to pay for this project. So we're essentially taking funds from the past, moving them forward to pay for this project so that we don't, we aren't actually paying for it out of next year's budget. And we're estimating that that's $1,150,000. And we will have additional money to add to fund balance beyond that as well from 12-13. So the district can afford to do this and add to fund balance and not borrow in the future.
We have not seen the June report yet. Is that correct?
No. We don't have our actuals yet, but my estimates are that we'll still have funds to put into fund balance, probably just, you know, in excess of another $1 million to put into fund balance. So we'll be, we'll be in good financial shape. We can take care of this project. And our, essentially, our budget is still balanced. We're just adding this project to it. And it's really the only way to draw from fund balance. An example outside of the school district might be if you were, not exactly the same thing, but if you were saving for a car, and you kept putting money into a special savings account for a car, and when it came time to buy the car, you had to take the money out of the savings account. You wouldn't take a loan then and pay for it that way, saying, well, I can't touch this savings. You're doing that for a reason, and that was one of the reasons. So you withdraw the funds and do it that way. You don't try and take it out of your check at that point. So we're using a little of those funds to pay for this project.
The fund balance continues to grow.
Yes.
What is the goal?
The goal up till now has been, or until a year or two, has been not to borrow for operating purposes, basically. At this point, what we really are looking forward to in the future is to take care of our maintenance needs and take care of changes to buildings that we need to make without having to ask taxpayers for more money. We're saying, in essence, we've got this in our budget. We have it in our operating funds. We should be taking care of this ourselves. We're not going to ask for any more money for this. We're just going to take care of these projects that need to be done.
So at some point, the levy isn't going to go up for a year because we're saying, we've got all this money in this fund. We don't, we don't need to do it. We've met the goal. And right now, the goal isn't, from what you defined, I don't, I don't know when we're there.
Well, let's, let's take a look at a specific example. Let's look at Forest Park. We've had, I want to say at least three referendums to do something with Forest Park.
You went right for the jugular.
Never passed. So we have, kids are there two years.
Right.
The parents don't get that involved at that point. They're looking forward to the high school. They remember fondly the elementaries, but they don't spend enough time there. So even from parents, it doesn't garner enough support to put the money into that building that we really should be doing. So as we look forward, we could start looking forward to those projects and fixing that building and doing the things we need to do within our operating budget without having to have the taxpayer come up with more money to fund that. We'd fund it from within our budget.
Do we have a guesstimate as to what that number is? Is that $5 million, $10 million to put in the Forest Park? I know it's a redheaded stepchild, and it's been abused, and it needs work.
Right. Right. As well as we have the list of, I don't know, $12 million worth of maintenance issues to do over time, and not all of them have to be done right away. But we need to kind of catch up with them and not fall behind on them as well. I don't remember what the amount was. I mean, we had a referendum question on that. I don't remember the exact amount, so I wouldn't want to guess at it. But you can say that's about the amount if we did everything to that building that we would need. Now, we don't have to do all of that at once. You can pick pieces of that to do over time when you have the funds to do it so that you're, you're doing it with funds that exist, and kind of pick those pieces off one at a time and fix that building up and be good stewards, you know, really of the taxpayers' money in keeping that up.
Is there a possibility of seeing that plan? You know, obviously, the referendum had, everything was going to be done. But there's a list of things, and we have a guesstimate as to what they might cost because obviously, we didn't go out and see a general contractor and have it bid.
Right.
But if we, if we had the list, and when we plan on attacking it, is that something that could be put together? Or is that just too far out in the future to really work on?
No, I see us doing that. I was thinking maybe the two- or three-year timeframe, but using the information we have as a basis, we could come up with at least something for planning purposes now. And then as we get closer to it, we could work on more specifics.
I guess I must say, though, you know, we have a fund balance policy that the board did adopt.
I'm sorry?
We have a fund balance policy. In our policies right now.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't state that we intend to use it for facility projects. We might want to consider modifying our policy if that's our intent. I also want to remind you that even though it is fund balance, the fund balance is generated from tax levy. Everything that was, doesn't just become magically there. It's not a savings. It was generated from tax levy. So I think we need to be mindful of looking at the use of those dollars in the overall prioritization of what we intend to fund. It's not just a behind-the-scenes, backdoor access to money. It should be part of our overall decision-making, just as carefully as we do in setting the tax levy, because in effect, it has been generated from tax levy. So let's be mindful of that. It's not, so when we come forward with a project like the concession stand, maybe we need to remember that, how do we pick this project? As you said, there are many needs. Why did we pick this one? And, you know, how much should we spend on it? Those are all important questions that the board should decide.
Right. The board should decide that. But I think we need Jim to give us the information as to what kind of plans are they putting together? And then we decide as a board, because ultimately, we're responsible to the public, as to how do we move forward with it? Do we move forward with it? You seem to be dancing around the tax levy. Do you have an issue with the levy as proposed in the budget this year?
At this point, I'm just concerned about the project and use of fund balance for the project. And as far as plans, we do get, the long-range plans are provided at the back of the budget. These are the, I'm assuming, these are the identified projects that we need.
But they're not cast in concrete. They do change.
That's correct. And we, choices have to be made.
But, okay. I don't see us making the choices. We're kind of presented with a budget, and we prove it. I mean, is anybody going to go through that list and say, of the 10 that we've got set up for 2013 and 14, we want to scratch these three, and we don't want to do those? I mean, we're not going to do that. Is that what you're recommending?
No, I don't have any issue with the ones that are identified.
Okay.
But we could. We could say, I mean, it's a recommendation. We could.
Yeah, you could, you could knock down the recommendation, but it's the administration's responsibility to bring forward those that have a priority because we deal with the operations every day. And we would have to, and I think one of the things that maybe the elephant that's in here right now regarding the concession project is we could have done a better job of communicating that with the board and so on. The whole scenario of how that thing developed and unfolded was unique in terms of timeframe and everything because we didn't have bids and so on and so forth. And I'm not going to make any excuses because there was, there was information there. Nonetheless, one of the biggest things that we looked at, number one, was would we be able to do it financially? And Jim took a look at that. But one of the other things, it would have been to our advantage to do it now because it's in coordination with the other projects. So when we're digging up roads to put sewer in, we wouldn't want to do that this year and then wait another year, and then all of a sudden, dig that all up again and start all over. So we were able to coordinate a lot of efforts to be able to make this thing work, even as far as how the practice fields and roads and stuff like that. So, but there's, there's no question, we could have done a better job communicating that, and would have probably answered more questions before this. And we acknowledge that, and that'll be rectified.
I just want to touch base on that. And I think it, it does have merit when you talk about, Linda, the different projects and why this project, and why now, and speak, as Steve just spoke to, why now? And looking at the different projects that we could do and the priorities that we may have. and the priorities that we may have. But I would just like to take a step back and, and go, if someone would've told me six months ago that I was gonna have a budget presented to me that was gonna have no staffing cuts, actually, we're increasing the FTE, we're not gonna cut any programs, we're actually gonna add some. The tax levy outside of the referendum that passed is actually projected to go down, and we're gonna put together a beautiful concession stand, restroom area, and everything that's incorporating our vision of a new and improved athletic field, and we're gonna, we're gonna do that within the confines of the budget. Go to the rooftops and tell everybody, that, that's my biggest frustration, how we got to where we got to now and when we found out about it. So, you just spoke to that, so I appreciate that, but I think that's something we could've done a much better job of, and I'm not talking about just this room, I think we could've gotten, you know, the community involved, website, whatever it is, understanding the wrinkles weren't ironed out yet, we needed to figure some things out, but we had drawings that were presented to us in March, and so at least we know we were thinking about it. And the plans for the concession stands were submitted to the common, or not the common, the planning commission, when the high school bid, or drawings were, that's what I'm trying to say, it got submitted there for approval. So, there was some lead time on it, but we still didn't even get, we still really didn't even find out about this until we actually had the budget presented. So, I think that might've been where a lot of the phone calls came in, a lot of the emails came in, but like, again, I'd like to almost take a look at this from a different perspective, outside of this room, I think we kinda got some real good mileage, we are gonna get some real good mileage out of this facility, and we can, you know, debate whether we should be spending that much money on it or not, and I've had discussions with people on that, but I would just like to have us been brought in on the process a little bit and, and explain this to the community, 'cause I think this, I think it is gonna be a positive. But to Linda's point, it's, it's something that we at least could've had a, you know, a conversation about when we, when we did it, how we did it, and everything, so, I just wanted to say that.
At what point do we try to look for some partners to help fund some of these athletic projects like other communities do? You know, Amy, you brought that up.
Well, we already have, on the onset of this project, we've been asked about the concession stand for years, it's been a sort of a thorn every time we go to an event there. And with the booster club, most of the booster clubs, if you look at in areas and, and community groups, Whittenall, for example, is one, Greendale's another one, but Greendale's was primarily, I believe, just for their turf, and they got a large donation from, I think it was Reader's Digest or whoever owned that, or, I don't know the exact details of that. So, our, our intended goal was, we needed, we felt we needed to move along with this project at the same time and in coordination with the building project, the high school, for the obvious logistical reasons. When we approached or when we presented and talked to booster club people, we told them there are certain things like a wall of fame or a hall of honor, concession stands for a, a school store, there's, there's a great need for us to move bleachers, our track is in terrible condition, we got all those things that we have to start planning for, and we haven't put the pencil to them yet, but we wanna involve our booster clubs and our community in that, because there are people that will wanna get involved with either donating or helping us get funds going, and I think that's, that's gonna be a real key for us in the future. And it could be as simple sometimes as naming rights, you know, we might say, you know, if you wanna have your name somewhere, it's gonna cost you a million dollars, or, you know, whatever that might be, and that's a whole nother discussion, but I don't think school districts can move forward with doing these kinds of projects, this, this one here is unique on the front end, but from this point forward, without the assistance of fundraising or community involvement or those, we can't do it out of our budget by itself, for sure. Because the concessions and restroom may be the smallest of, of the whole, you know, as we look at bleachers and lights and track and all that kinda thing, that might be the biggest part of it. And we do have a strong community use of those facilities, so I'm sure we'll be able to generate community interest. Not only community interest, you know, sometimes businesses like to get involved in that. I know I was approached by somebody a while back to, to go talk to somebody from the quarry, they're looking for ways to, to work with school districts, but that was right after they lit off some dynamite and made everybody mad, so I don't know if that was political or not, so. Nonetheless, you know, all kidding aside, those are the kinds of things that I think people, you know, there's that old saying out there in educational fundraising, all you gotta do is ask, and, you know, we're gonna be doing that to some degree with our Performing Arts Center, you know, we're gonna be trying to draw some additional revenue by naming rights on seats, you know, little things like that that we haven't even discussed yet, but we have to get, get to that point where we do some of those things as well.
When I was at the, sorry, Linda, when I was at the CISA meeting, I was talking with a Greendale board member, and they've developed a coalition, might be a little too strong of a word, but with Whittenall and Greendale, and I think there's one other one involved, but their whole plan is to get out into the public more, to make them more aware of what's going on, so when the public sees the school boards or sees the administration, if you will, out there and letting them know what's going on, they know that the next thing that follows isn't gonna be, "So, we need some money." And so, they're keeping a continual engagement with the community and not just doing it when they need a referendum, so there's some real value to that, and maybe that's something that, you know, we can tap into about just keeping a message out there, not just the quarterly newsletter, not just whatever updates that we have now, but trying to find a way of engaging.
Well, and we're gonna have some of that built in, actually, I think a significant amount when the Performing Arts Center's done, because we have a lot of dance studios, our play, everything goes out of, out of district, you know, we're using somebody else's facility, so just bringing that home is gonna be an enhancement to show people, here's what we've got, and, and we wanna continue to, to fund it.
One of my concerns, go ahead. As serious that would be, you know, we've spent a lot of time and effort in surveying our community and prioritizing projects, and this one was not supported by our surveys. There are greater needs at the middle school, and now we come forward a $1.1 million project. It goes against everything we've done to support the referendum. I, you know, I have concerns about that. It could've been something less, or, you know, why this one, the first, why this is the first one? Why not a higher concern at the middle school?
With the way we look at it...
And I might be able to say that, I know, timing is somewhat important, but by rushing ahead, we, we didn't get the chance to work with other groups to, to get some other partnerships or to get a little more engagement with the community. Why, you know, we, we're kind of playing that card now, and can't be played again.
I, I don't look at it that way, because the, the list for athletic was, was on the list in terms of priorities that the community had identified, it was just not in the top three that we decided to go to referendum with. And when, if we were to start taking from just a political standpoint and do something at the middle school, we're doing a lot of things in smaller degrees, Mark's got a lot of projects going on over there, but those are the unnoticedables, and, and the concession stands and so, and so on are, are community events where we get thousands of people that go through there, we don't get thousands of people that come through our middle school, but we can address the thousands of students that go through there with some of the cosmetic things right now, because if you remember, the biggest part of that middle school was the addition of space to move the sixth grade over. It wasn't so much renovation, although that had a big part of it if we moved the sixth grade, so, I hear what you're saying, but I think they're, they're not apples to apples, because I think we have, the needs were just as important in one place or the other, and I think putting where we are, from a logistical standpoint and from the, the community interest in having them there, I think made more sense to do it there than it did to try to go back and tell people, "Well, we're gonna start doing it at the middle, at the, anything at the middle school," even though you just said no for the third time. That doesn't make any sense to, to us as far as where the priorities of budgets or projects should be.
Can we ask Mr. Cludier to come up? I have a couple questions.
Hello?
Hi. And actually, they're not my questions, they're ones that, from correspondence, that's been going back and forth, and, you know, Mrs. Schlitter had asked you about the sprinklers, how are we sprinkling or watering the football field?
We have a non-potable water well at the, an irrigation well at the south end of the football field. We use that for both the baseball and the football area. We're gonna maintain that. Now, as far as water, getting water to the, that area has never been the problem. The water main that feeds the building is going to run right through the middle of that gate, that entrance gate, it's there now. It's been getting the water out has been the problem. So, the sanitary sewer, we're taking that down to 51st Street, and the storm sewer is going to the southeast corner of the football stadium. There's a pond being dug there, small, low area to collect water. So, does that answer your question? So, the water is there, and there's a, and there's, again, a non-drinkable water well near the south end Gold House. I should buy the scoreboard.
Thank you. And then, this is Witkowski, had asked about the restrooms, would they still be open, access to the, the restrooms in the, the gym area, and you said yes. Did the public know that they were open all this time, you know, when we had the porta-potties? Did they, did they know they were open?
As far as I know, yes, but however, it's a long walk and no one ever wanted to take it. And, again, if you look at the spectators for that building, the code requirement, we're, we're providing most of those needs, and we will still allow them to use the, the high school building itself. But the code, the code does set a number, and we're close.
And...
It's not oversized, I guess is the point I'm trying to make, the number of toilets.
And then, the elimination of the wall of fame and the, the painting, what, how much more, is that because, obviously, cost, is that why? You had said in, in a response, that's now out of the project?
Yes, we removed it not only for cost, but the wall of fame, we see this first piece in, as, as seed money, sort of, because what we have found time and time again as we study this around, typically, when a community does this, the school district does the first part, and then, then, now you've got something to sell. Now you can bring in those kinds of donations that we're looking for and create those kinds of partnerships that we want. So, I would, you might wanna look at this as seed money, as a starting point, so that when we need turf, we can get turf, when we need to add the bleachers.
Lighting.
Those kinds of things, that, that we have, the track, that we have, here's what we can do, help us do the rest.
How much does the, the design of two buildings joined by this archway add to the cost? Why couldn't it have been one building? Wouldn't that have saved on foundation and you could've had the same square footage but not two buildings?
Well, again, those costs have not been broken out, but I think you would lose, A, there's some challenges with the topography there. I mean, it may not look like it, but there's, I wanna say, four feet of drop from there to where the porta-potties were, from the, from the parking lot down to the porta-potties, there's quite a bit of drop there. We would've struggled with that. In addition to that, by flanking both sides, you would've had, at least had one ticket booth on the other side of it, but by flanking it by both sides, it creates really that kind of welcoming environment, and two ticket booths that allow you to process the number of people, for example, the game on September 20th is with Oak Creek, and we get an awfully large crowd for that, for that game. And, so, this will allow us to, to manage those kinds of functions.
It's $1.1 million to, to manage one game? I mean, there's an awful lot of money being spent on this facility.
If you look at the two...
To solve what problem? A problem of, we had three porta-potties that met the needs, along with bathrooms, there were bathrooms available, how many are in the high school that were available to the public?
There's about, there's two, two near the pool and there's two off of the gym.
We've been functioning with these all along, and now we're adding 24.
Well, I, I have a, I have a car that, you know, if I had a car that burned oil and the brakes were bad, I'd be functioning, but I wouldn't be getting to work on time or safely. And quite honestly, as Dr. Paz mentioned, the community has really put on outcry for this. The three porta-potties have not been meeting the needs.
No.
At least from what I've been told, and I can imagine that it would be quite difficult to, if I got out of the bathroom, three porta-potties isn't enough for a couple of thousand people.
Mr. Bilslet, you, you wanna come?
I was, was just going to say that if you, you've got the two buildings, it does make an excellent entrance, as Mr. Cludier was saying, but if you, if you made them one building, you're essentially eliminating one block wall. It, it wouldn't cut the project in half or save a significant amount of money to do that, even, even though we don't have numbers on that, if you think about it, you're, you're not saving that much by, by doing that.
And I don't know where you would put one building, I mean, configuration-wise, the existing building, that site wouldn't be big enough for the square footage that, that we're talking about, and if you put it, you know, downhill, then you've got the drainage, the sewer issue, I would think, and it's, it's not, it wouldn't be as user-friendly, I don't think.
We did look at one building...
You'd have to have one long skinny building and it would, I think it would be really hard for...
We didn't have the room or the space to do that, and, and who wants their restrooms with their concession stands?
That's another good point.
There needs to be a little bit of separation there, and just from a logistics standpoint, the room we had to work with, it didn't work on the site.
Given the upgrade in the kitchen area, are we expecting revenues associated with that additional space that might enhance future projects?
Concession revenues go to school organizations, I believe.
Right, that's correct.
Very sports teams and clubs and...
The concession stands get some of it, and some of it goes to cover the cost.
I understand that's what's been in the past, but given this greater potential, is there other plans to change that? That's my question. I understand that's the way it has worked in the past, but...
From a facility usage standpoint, we, those would be, as Mark said, those are the first phase until we get a, I was gonna say legitimate, but a, a legal track, if you will, so we can conduct regionals, sectionals, whatever it might be, or host larger playoff games, or those kinds of events that generate revenue. It won't happen as far as us being able to sit here and say, "Well, we're gonna make X number of thousand dollars a year," no, that's, that's not the intent. The, the intent is to provide facilities for our community to be able to go to and enjoy and use and so on and so forth, because they're necessary. We, we have not been, I don't think, meeting the needs of what our community expectations are.
I'm just throwing this out there, but is there, I have no clue, is there any type of winter events we can have down in that area? You know?
I would guess there is, you know, if we got creative and thought about snowshoe races or cross-country skiing or...
I saw some pictures this spring of the track girls shoveling snow off the track. Do you count that as a winter activity?
Could've saw that in April and May, too.
This year, yeah.
But, but I think that's one of the things that we've met with Sarah on, to be able to look at maximizing the use of that facility, but it's, it's like we've talked about, there are just certain things that have to take place before we can do that, and this is that first step, and I think Mark already made a good point, is when you, when you show people what you've got or what you're willing to do, then they're willing to come forward a little bit more, as opposed to shooting into the wind and, and hoping that things happen.
I think whenever you earmark a project like this for facilities needs, you're gonna have plenty of people that are gonna wish we could've done the pool, you're gonna have plenty of people that wish we could've addressed the entrance in the forest park, you're gonna have plenty of people that are gonna celebrate the fact that we finally got concession stands, but then they're gonna go, "Well, let's do something with the field." And so, I think it's natural that we're gonna, you're gonna have people all across the board, but you gotta start somewhere, and you could debate whether it's too much or not, and, and that kinda is what it is, but...
I think you're right, we, we've got people that said just regarding the referendum and even the concessions, finally, about time you do something. It's like, almost like they were mad at us before.
And you had a bunch of other people that went, "Great, oh, my taxes just went up, I didn't wanna think." So, you, that's just it, you're gonna be all across...
But in a concession project, that didn't have anything to do with the taxes, it was the referendum that the community passed.
Correct.
Mr. Ritter, did you have a comment?
I have a question, but it's back on fund balance, so you can finish this issue here and, and add, I do, I would like to ask her.
I do wanna kinda throw out there that, this is gonna tag on to what you were saying, Tim, about getting this information is, is late, and when we're looking at these projects that we're gonna be doing, I understand that, that the window opportunity is a summer, you know, May, June, July, August, and then after that, you've lost it, because now you've got all the kids and the dangers of somebody getting hurt with the construction and whatnot, you have to be more careful. So, if we could know about these kinds of plans earlier, March, April, May, we, we could certainly have discussions, have a basic approval of them, and that can kind of float through the budget quicker, and this angst that we're going through can be avoided.
And I think that's well noted, Ellen, and I, I agree with you 100%, and I can guarantee you'll see that in the future, because we've got some big projects that we're gonna be coming forward with, one of them is the pool that we're gonna be discussing, and, and it won't be in next May, it's gonna be coming up pretty quick.
Okay, good.
Well, I think, though, it's key, as you said, I'm hearing it's more than once, that it's part of a bigger plan. This is the first thing, you gotta get started. Well, what are the plans? Have you, do, do we have a plan that we've all seen and agreed on as far as athletic facilities?
We had a plan that was drawn up in order to say, if we were to do the concession, the restroom project, where would it go? For example, did we want to move it farther to the east and put it where, uh, that, that garage is and change the entrance? So we looked at all the entry routes, where it could be. Uh, we looked at, what if we moved the baseball field? Well, that took on a whole other discussion. What if we did this? And we had cries for creating a girl softball diamond, because we're not equal with Title IX, we have a facility on site. So we looked at all of those and had a consultant come in and say, give us at least a thumbnail of, if we do this, what, where could other things go? It's, it's not cut in stone at all. A, a lot of it is just with existing, like the track is where the track will go, but it's going to take some grading, because we have to make it wider and bigger. Bleachers would change, because we would take the slope out and put the bleachers closer to the field, which would create more space for other things to happen. So there, there's a scenario out there that we just simply said, we've got to have a starting point to say, we better not build these in an area where we're going to come back in three years and say, ooh, geez, we should have looked at that down the road and we couldn't have done this. You know, the practice field is a key example where that goes. So, uh, there's a master plan, just in terms of con- conceptually, but the, the, the specific plan is for the concessions in the restroom.
The master plan isn't that different from, from what we, when we very first started talking about our facilities planning process. It was kind of a, kind of a, almost like a wish list, so to speak. And that's what we, our very first facility survey, I seem to recall, a master plan of the entire grounds of what would be possible-
Yeah.
-to do. Obviously, we aren't going to be able to do it all, certainly not now. But, um, I'm, I'm assuming that that's kind of what you're referring to.
That was sort of the starting point, uh, because there are no budget figures, there's no timeline right now. It's, it's get one thing done that was really critical, that we felt was critical, and then move on. And again, acknowledge that we, we should have and could have communicated better. We wouldn't probably have some of these discussions and, uh, but to Tim's point as well, I think after the fact, we'll be able to stand on the roof and say, you know, we did something right and, and good, so.
Is there a softball field in the plan? Girl softball field?
Yes.
And where is it?
It would be in the north-
North of the baseball.
Yeah.
Uh, question on that. With, with the Rock now in play, was there any thought about moving, had any discussion about having the games being played at the Rock and then using these as practice facilities or finding room for doing some of these other fields?
Absolutely. We, we wanted to create that partnership with them, so our girls aren't going by that. I think it's a city, is it the city?
The Lions Club.
Yeah, Lions Legend Field is behind DPW.
Yeah, because the Rock is, is so far going over extremely well. And it's really a showcase facility, it's even get, it's not even completed, but it's, it's taken on a, a whole new life. And we, you know, our kids are probably going to want to play there. Our little ones that are playing there now, the parents love it. Well, that might be the ideal opportunity for us to take a look at that. At the same time, we, we don't want to move Jim Hughes Field, because that's Jim Hughes Field right now and it deservedly so. So, you know, that's sort of, I don't want to say sacred and make it sound like that, but it, it's important to this community that that field stays there. But the, the softball field, for example, and that's in the northwest quadrant behind the baseball field, part of that was, we didn't go overboard with developing that, because we still didn't know how we were going to have the mitigation for the water issues we had with the high school. So a lot of these things just play off each other. There's, there's nothing that we could have said by saying, here is our athletic, exterior athletic facility master plan, here's what we're going to do. Because what we're doing at the high school changed, it already did change a lot of things.
Wetland replacement?
Wetland replacement, all those kinds of things.
Well, again, based on what you said, though, it sounds like maybe waiting wouldn't have been a bad idea, because you, because a lot of things are changing. You know, we're kind of setting it right there.
No, they, they changed from the standpoint of, once they got rectified from the high school site, then we knew where things, that we could do, like the practice field is probably the biggest issue. Right now, the softball field is a big issue, because we don't know if we're going to have to use that northwest corner as a site for pond retention or water retention or whatever. And if it doesn't, that goes into the discussion regarding the use of the Rock or finding another facility for our girls or whatever we might do.
Is there any more discussion on the concession?
I did just have one other question. You men- mentioned it briefly, Jim, at the last meeting, but just to follow up on clarification. You said you wanted, you did not want to include CG SMIT as part of the bids, because they were already part of the referendum?
Right.
Without knowing all the nuances involved, just taking a, a step back, I would think you'd be able to keep things above board um, and say, well, this is for, this is a referendum project, here's a separate bid, here's all the paperwork, we got all the stuff to satisfy, to, to, to show it, and here's the stuff for the concession stand. Wouldn't they have been one of the contractors that have been in one of the best positions to handle it? Or, I'm not, I'm not looking at second guessing, I'm just wondering why they may not have been even asked to bid?
Remember, they're a construction management firm for us mainly at this point. They aren't, we aren't asking them to build our high school. We're asking them to facilitate the building of the high school and bid all of this out.
So they're not the general, or they are the general?
They're not the general, they're the construction manager, who can do some work and, and may bid on a piece of it here and there, but they're not doing all of the work. Uh, and while it's technically possible to do that, uh, in the public eye, sometimes it's best just not to do that. You, you can have it all separated and, and be able to see the numbers are all different, but all you need is one person in the community to start spreading the rumor that they're using referendum dollars to do this over here and look, it's the same company doing it. And it doesn't matter what the reality is at that point. So you, you don't want that to happen.
Well, that was the reason for just, we're just going to keep this totally-
We're just going to keep it totally separate, different group, everything.
And what it allowed to do, it, it also allowed us to use local vendors, local construction people on a smaller project that couldn't be active bidders because of the sizes and the scope of the high school project. So we were able to locally, and that was one of our criteria on everything we've done, is when we can go local, we got to make sure we keep it here.
And I did get your email, but not till late, so I haven't looked at the whole thing, but so it was bid out, there were at least, I didn't see how many, but there were what, three, four?
There were four generals.
Okay.
And then, uh, two or three on every other one of the, of the primes.
Okay.
And we took a low bid on all four, on all-
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and, well, and sometimes, sometimes a low bid doesn't know is the best bid, I get that. But it was nice that you were able to do that.
Well, we do do a scope review to make sure that, that they all bid, that everything's included in your bid.
Right.
Gee, you're, you're low here. Did you include this? Did you include this? And if their answer is yes, okay, now we expect you to do it for that amount of money.
Right.
It's called a scope review.
Thank you.
Do we have any other, uh, additional budget questions?
Well, are we, what is our process here for a-
So we're, we're having a budget discussion, a general budget discussion right now. And then we will ma- make a motion.
I'd like to see us both separately on the concession project.
Didn't Mr. Ritter have something to ask or say?
I'm curious though what your question is, since we, that is a source of funding for this project.
I would say that's part of the budget question.
That is part of, go ahead, because Mrs. Witkowski brought up the fund balance question, so.
Just a clarification of what Jim's or your comments in your initial part of the response. It started out something like, until a year or two ago, the goal was to get fund balance to the point where we didn't have to do the end of work for apartments. Now, have we reached that point? Is that no longer part of the goal? Or is it still part of the goal, but there's other aspects to the goal as well? That's my question.
Yeah, we, we reached that point where we didn't have to do that. Uh, that doesn't mean that we're done forever. We have, as, as our budget gets bigger, we still have to add to fund balance because of that. Uh, so that's still a goal, that we want to maintain that. But right now, uh, we're in our second year of, uh, not borrowing for operations.
Mrs. Witkowski, are you making a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to, to, uh, remove the concession stand project from the budget. And, and let me, uh, say that I'm perfectly willing to, uh, or someone can propose to approve it as a separate, on a separate vote. After we voted on the general budget.
Can you state, state your full motion, please?
I move to remove the concession stand project from the, um, the budget, along with the fund balance.
When you say along with the fund balance, you're talking about that which is funding?
Correct.
Okay.
We have a motion by Mrs. Witkowski to remove the concession stand project and the fund balance funding?
Yes.
To vote, does, is that the complete motion or to, to vote on it separately?
Uh, yes, I can hear that, yes. Although I'm not sure that's a-
No, no, okay, okay. Motion by Mrs. Witkowski to remove the concession stand project and the fund balance-
Funding that funds it.
Funding, that, the funding that funds it from the two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget. Is there a second?
Oh. Okay, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Is there any discussion?
I, I would, I'm seconding it, but I would really like to see that we will vote on that concession stand. And I don't know if that needs to be part of the, this amendment, but I think we need to, to, to put that to bed tonight.
I think that's what you said you were asking, correct?
Right, but when, when you read the motion, you didn't put that in there.
Vote on it separately.
Yeah, I would follow the, um, this vote with a motion to approve it separately and fund it with fund balance.
Under this discussion, are you doing this to set a precedent that we vote on?
Projects separately?
Projects separately.
That would be, yes. Not necessarily we need to do it every, um, every budget separately, but we would have advance, review, and approval of projects prior to them being included in a budget.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I think, as I said a couple of times now, I think that that can usually be remedied, because if, if you're saying that you want to be, have it removed and then vote on it to prove it as a separate thing, I think that's simply just a, a process for us to be able to determine capital projects in terms of communication with the board and those kinds of things. Uh, because what I'm hearing you say is, if you vote against it, then we'll shut the project down and then it'll have to come back in some other way to the board, whatever way you direct us, so. But I'm, I'm, if I heard you right, you said remove it and vote on it and then, you know, do it from a process standpoint of, and I get that. But I think logistically and operationally, from, from a board's perspective, all you have to do is tell us, get your communication skills up to date, let's make sure we have these things in front of us. And I think we've already gotten that message.
And I also want to throw out the caution that the current concession stand is in the process of being dismantled.
I understand that, however-
Okay, so we wouldn't have a concession stand this coming year if we didn't approve it. So kind of behind a, between a rock and a hard place on this.
Will the concession stand be ready?
Supposed to be.
By football season?
I see what, I see-
I just feel that I-
I see, I see your process. I, I see what you are attempting, the point you're attempting to make and I'm in agreement with that and, um-
So the motion is to remove the project from the vote of the budget? And that this will be the first vote before we vote on the approval of the budget?
Yes, that is the motion on the floor. And, uh, I'm in favor of the project, but I'm in favor of your motion, so. Is there any other discussion?
I think it's important that we, uh, discuss the project separately and I appreciate the, uh, information that was provided. Again, we all agree, the timing was not what it should have been. But I think it's important to, um, to recognize priorities and, uh, in the context of, uh, other, uh, projects that this money could have been used for.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Cludier? No, okay, sorry. Is there any other discussion? All right, um, to clarify your motion, motion by Mrs. Witkowski to remove the concession stand project,
And fund balance funding?
And fund balance funding from the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget, seconded by Mr. Alexandrovich. Maybe we have a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Hi.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Hi.
Mr. Nielsen?
Oh.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
I say yes. Mrs. Evans?
Yeah, aye.
Four yes, two no.
Motion carries.
And now I would like to make the motion to, um, approve the project funded with fund balance outside of the budget. I mean, I want to honor that, that's what my intent was.
Second.
A separate vote to approve that project.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Witkowski to approve the concession stand and, uh-
Associated funding?
Associated funding, using the associated fund balance and it's seconded by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion?
I s- I still think it's too much money and I, I don't think it honors the priorities that, um, the public has, uh, indicated. So that's, that's why I would not support the project as it currently is.
I also think it is a little bit too much money and I would like to have seen, I, I, I mean, the Saber Spirit Club had offered some assistance and I don't know if they meant monetarily in, you know, when they offered that email. I think they said assistance in the project, but I, I would have liked to have seen some partnering a little while ago, but I'm in favor of basic, basic favor of the project, but. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of, oh, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Hi.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Hi.
Mrs. Witkowski?
No.
I say no. Six, two pass. I'm sorry, four, two pass. Motion carries, thank you.
Now I'm looking for a motion to approve the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget draft. Do we hear a motion?
Motion by Mr. Alexandrovich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein, is there any discussion? I, I would just like to say, um, the, the levy is basically the referendum. And that's the burden-
I have a question.
The burden of the taxpayer. Yes, Mrs. Witkowski? Well, the, the change in levy on the non-debt service section, how much of that is really a function of the increased state aids? I mean, our expenditure, we're still spending more money. We're spending two point five percent more money. Is that, do I have that? It's hard to find it in here, but we are spending more, more dollars. We're able to levy less because we have more state aids.
Yes.
So even though we, um, recognize the reduction in, in levy, we're spending more money. So we need to be mindful of that. And I believe that the, uh, the driver, though, in the state aid is also a factor of spending per student. And do we have that in here as far as the, uh, it goes up one point nine percent? I'd be interested to see how that compares to other, uh, communities. Again, just to provide some framework to how, as a board, we can evaluate again, you know, our spending. I know we focus on levy, but, you know, spending really sets up the overall funding picture. But we can't really control what the state does and we can't really, don't have a lot of control of our valuation, which also influences our, the formula. But we can influence the overall expenditures and the cost per student, so. And I also note that, um, the million dollars that we did experience, the positive fund balance that we've added, you know, that's a function of spending less than we, less than we budgeted. you know, that's a function of spending less than we budgeted.
Correct you.
Spending less, receiving more revenue than we spent. Fund balance isn't built on the budget, but it would be less than on the actuals.
But is it a function of spending less or receiving more revenue than we anticipated?
Right.
And it's probably spending less.
Right.
Because when I compared the actual to budget on the 11 and 12 year, our spending was down 1,633,000 and our revenue was up about 60,000. So it was controlling expenditures.
That might suggest that there's room in the budget to pull things back, but I'm not going to...
I don't disagree. I just don't have enough information yet to identify it.
And this is just preliminary. As Jim indicated, we will get more news. And I, based on your past practice, it's, the levy always gets better in terms of being less, correct? Because you estimate...
Good surprises in the last couple of years. Yeah, one can only hope at this point. I've given up trying to estimate what the legislature will do and how the Department of Public Instruction will interpret that and how they'll change their numbers. I think that one of the good things to look at is that over half the school districts, even though there's more money coming from the state, over half the school districts lost money this year in aid. We're not one of those. So we're in a good spot.
I also want to point out that the revalue, or what do they call it when they...
Reassessment.
Reassessment. Thank you. God, I'm terrible with words. Mine went down. So I don't know if that's going to affect the amount of money that we're really going to be getting.
It won't affect the amount of money that we're going to get. The effect that it has, if everybody's value on their home changed by the same percentage, then it would be just as we've portrayed it. It would be that percentage decrease. If everybody's different, then there will be some that their taxes fluctuate differently, either one way or the other. They'll go up a little more, they'll go down, they'll be up a little less than we're saying. Reassessment years are, I mean, they're impossible to predict. And some reassessment years, things are way out of line between houses and neighborhoods. And some reassessment years aren't so bad that it's kind of the whole city is about the same. But this time, there's some differences. So I would expect some people to, you know, they might come to you and say, well, you know, my percentage was this or whatever, and that'll have a big effect on that. That one we don't control.
I think Randy has a question.
Yes, Randy.
Just to clarify that, I can't hear what you said. But last year, the assessment ratio was about 104. Best I can tell from the information that you put out, which didn't include an accurate number, but it still looks like we went down about 11.6% from being essentially at 104. So I would interpret that as meaning we're going to have, we have lower property value per student. Which typically would translate into more state aid. Am I wrong on that?
The state looks at equalized value when determining that, so.
And that's why I say we were at 104.
Right.
But it was actually over 11 and a half.
Right.
So we're dropping more than what the state was thinking we were off.
Right. And you know that equalized is the target for assessed over a longer period of time. So they need to bring it down. And it makes sense to reevaluate and bring it down to something that's a little more actual. And even the adjustments between properties being unequal, they're based on what actually happens in the market. So it's making it so people are paying the right amount for their home, but it's different than it was before. And for some people, it's more different. So that's hard to explain. And that's what creates some anger for some people who are on the wrong end of that equation.
Is there any other discussion? Can you correct me if I'm wrong here? We had a motion by Mr. Alexandrovich and a second by Mrs. Klein?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. To approve the 2013-2014 budget draft. Maybe we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
I'll say yes. Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Yes, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9B is the Board Retreat.
10B.
I'm sorry, 10B, Board Retreat Planning. And currently, Dr. Pats and I had discussed, we have three hours for the retreat. And we had discussed items we did not get to finish at the first retreat, which were the, first of all, Board Goals. And then we have Superintendent Goals. And then we would like to discuss liaisons. We haven't assigned those yet because we thought it might be a good idea to discuss those first, the process. Three hours is not a lot of time to get going on our goals. I just want to make sure you're all in agreement with those items. How do you all feel about that?
Liaisons? It's being building liaisons? Nothing?
Well, I think building liaisons and also our, I was hoping we could discuss our actual liaison process here to just briefly. I don't think we have a lot of time to spend on that, but it shouldn't take a lot of time. You know, just how we think it's going. Do you have any comments on that, Dr. Pats?
No, I think those were the three that we had talked about in the liaison. I think we just want to put some more teeth into what the expectations are for it.
Any comments or suggestions?
Well, I think, and maybe this might even go on to the Board Goals. I would like to review the budget, the process and how it, maybe how it went this year. And I don't want to beat a dead horse as far as the project. But I think we might discuss a little bit more. I know in the current document that we get from Jim, there is a process that kind of describes what goes on. But I don't think we actually experienced that process. We just got the document at a very late time. And I think as a board, I would just like to hear people's, you know, their, what their reaction might be. Do you think this is good enough? Or do you think there's a possibility that we can improve it?
I agree. I think the whole budgeting process, what we get, is so sketchy. We don't, we don't have much of a feel for what's going in. There's no subsidiary schedules that tie back into significant expenditures, for example. You know, like maintenance. I was talking to Mark and he said, you know, you take janitorial supplies, huge chunk of the maintenance budget. And should we be identifying some of that? Should we understand that? Because the other side of that is, then it's the projects that are added into it. And I'd just like to see more detail.
Now, we can do something like that at a Board Retreat or we can make that an agenda item at a first meeting of the month also, where we might have more time to discuss something like that, whatever the consensus is here.
Taking time to drill down into the budget and getting a greater explanation of what's here and maybe ask for additional information. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Right. For example, I printed out all the emails of the questions and the answers that came back. And there were 14 pages. Now, some pages weren't full, obviously. And some were repeating what, the questions again, so there was a lot of filler there. That just seemed like a whole lot of information was missing that people were asking questions about. So that, to me, is an indictment that we just aren't getting enough information for the accounting types that dig into this stuff.
Unless you're thinking this is going to be a suggestion for a goal, which I am not going to... Dr. Pats, do you have a comment?
No, I think, you know, when we present or when Jim presents and we give opportunity for feedback, we've gotten very limited feedback in the past. And I think when you start drilling down into an item, I think that gets into the micromanagement. If we're going to talk about how many janitorial supplies we get and those kinds of things, granted, everything in there is a significant expenditure. But I think the overall issue is, you know, how much detail is necessary or important and, you know, the value additive for us to break that apart at all. Because we've had the same discussion every single year. And we've had, you know, the same kinds of questions. So I guess it just, I guess it deserves a discussion to say, what exactly are you looking for? And, you know, there's one thing about looking for a budget. Then there's another thing about, you know, micromanaging the budget. But there's that gray area. And I think we got to determine what that gray area is.
Well, we're always trailing the line of the macro view and the micro view and the budget. And I think what will benefit Allen over time is his time. You know, getting to, because I know when I first came involved in this, I mean, Linda lives in budgeting. She knows this like the back of her hand. And this, you know, took a little bit of time for me to grasp it. And I'm sure I still don't have all of it, but.
I'll use the example, the maintenance budget, purchase services. Budget last year was 1,107, this year 2,348. The 1,150,000, I think, is in there. I think there's, from my conversation with Mark, there's about $500,000 worth of janitorial supplies. I don't want to know how much toilet paper we buy. I want something that says janitorial supplies, $500,000. Concession stand, $1,100,000. And maybe the balance of this is the maintenance, the 507,000 that we have in the maintenance projects that we're going to go through, 574. And that makes it up. But I don't know.
There may be a couple more lines that can be added or a schedule that can be added that would help answer some of the questions without having to, you know, drill all the way down. So that's what I meant by the fine line between the macro view and the micro view.
Well, I don't want to go all the way down to the nitty gritty and start looking at invoices. 2,348,000, significant amount of dollars. I want to have some idea of what's going in there.
So then is an early meeting in the month later on a better time to discuss this than at, you know, a budget, the budget process than at a Board Retreat? I mean, it sounds to me like this might take up a lot of time. Are you looking for...
You could get involved in a retreat and...
We could maybe try and get a little more direction on a goal and then go to the monthly meeting. Because you're right, I'm not quite coming at the same way you are at. I'm more important. To me, the process is probably more important. I don't want to be handed the budget at the end, but I'll... Just want a little more understanding of, I mean, you know, connect some of these dots about, we approve these, we see the technology plan. How does it connect to the budget that you give us? We approve new classes. I mean, that's a little stronger connection. But just connect these reports throughout the year to, as it flows into the budget. So just connect it better.
So why don't we, at the retreat, just see what happens with our goals? See where we go? And then maybe in September, you know, do an early, or September, October, do an early meeting if we need to on the budget. So right now, we'll just go with Superintendent Goals, goals and liaisons. Everyone's in agreement. Sound good? Okay. Thank you. All right.
What's the date again? I want to write it down.
26.
26.
26.
At 6 o'clock. And we'll send a reminder. Thank you. Okay. Item 10, item 11. I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session to discuss employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data for the district administrator and named administrators pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, sub 1, sub C, and 118.24. Do I hear that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Schlitter. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
I say yes. Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Motion carries five to one. We'll take a five-minute recess and then we'll be in closed session. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the performance evaluation data
I'm not sure what you just asked.
I'm sorry. Well, regarding the closed session, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the performance, compensation, and promotion evaluation data discussion?
All right. I'll do it. Let me see if I can get this right. I'd like to make a motion that we approve a increase pool with an average of 2.07% per administrator increase for the, is that for the 13-14 school year or 12-13?
13-14.
13-14 school year.
We have a motion by Mrs. Klein. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Mr. Alexandrovich to approve a 2.07% increase for the 2013-14 school year with a distribution pool. With a second by, did I already say that? Mr. Alexandrovich. Can we have a roll call, please?
Let me get it right. Sure. Mrs. Evans?
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there any discussion?
It's 2.07.
2.07.
That's what I said, right?
Yes, you did. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
I'll say yes. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And is there any motion regarding the discussion in closed session regarding compensation for the district administrator? Dr. Pats?
I'll make a motion to approve a 2.07% increase for Dr. Pats for the 13-14 school year.
It's a motion by Mrs. Klein. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion by Mrs. Klein and a second by Mr. Alexandrovich to approve a 2.7...
Show 2.0.
2.07% increase for the 2013-2014 school year. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
I'll also say yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 13, Board Debriefing. Does anyone have any comments?
More than we already did?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say one thing. And I'm, Linda, I'm sorry, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. But I felt like when you were asking Mr. Cludier questions, you really kind of put him on the spot. And if I were him, I would have felt really uncomfortable. I can't speak for how he felt. But I felt like, you know, he was almost attacked a little bit. And I know you probably didn't mean to do that. But I just wanted to let you know that that was my observation.
Can you point one out? Because I didn't, I didn't see that.
Weren't the all questions you already emailed him?
It was, it was, what about, well, he, the way that he answered is what I most remember about the car with the, that leaks oil.
Oh, she was asking about cost if you put it in one building instead of two buildings, it would be cheaper.
Right, right.
Yeah, and do we really have to spend all this money to get this done?
Yeah, and it was just the way your question was phrased and the tone as much as anything. I mean, it was a good question.
Well, I appreciate you asking other members. I understand you're...
Well, I appreciate people's other numbers, I understand your, but that's, wasn't my intent.
Yeah, I know, I didn't think it was, but anyway, just want to throw that out there.
I appreciated all the work that went into the music report and especially, I like watching the children, that was very good, but I know they put a lot of work into that report.
Thank you.
It was very good.
I think we were, again, very open with our comments, I don't think anybody held back too much. Ergo, Linda, and I'm not picking on you, but I think we have to be that way. You can't fix if you don't know it's broke and if you're passionate about something, we've got to talk about it and sometimes it won't sound like we're talking nice, we got to get it out in the open, clear the air, move forward. I think there's more of that going on, from what I've seen in my limited experience.
Any other comments? Thank you. Item 14 is future agenda items, we don't have anything listed under there right now, but anyone have a request? I know we do have one now that will be possibly a budget discussion, so we'll keep that on the burner and I would like to add that hopefully, Dr. Pats, we can arrange to close the board handbook if we can try.
Megan will be putting that final draft together, I'll try to get her sent out tomorrow because I always was editing more than anything.
Okay, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen and a second by Mrs. Witkowski, opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, we are adjourned at 10:13, thank you very much.